In subcommittee, but for the public's edification, if you could just, each of you introduce yourselves.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Wood, the Planning and Development Director.
And I'm Peter Niall, the Building Commissioner.
Okay. And again, Ms. Wood, I know we just did this, but if you could just give us a quick summary of your petition for the public.
So, we are proposing amendment to the zoning ordinance because there are sections of the zoning ordinance that contradict each other. We have Section 71.1 on page 110 of the zoning ordinance. It's a long paragraph that I'm not going to read, but one sentence from the paragraph states the following: "Signs may not extend above the building's roof line and/or the wall upon which the sign is located." So that's one section. And if you turn the page of the zoning ordinance to page 112 and look at Section 71.9.1, there's a section, a sentence within a paragraph that states that signs may not extend more than eight feet above the roof line. So when looking at the zoning ordinance, you can see one section permits signs to extend above the roof line and one does not. So we have to have something definitive that will direct us as to which it is.
Okay. And if you could also, just again for the public, if you could advise us as to the planning board's recommendation as a whole at this point.
The planning board made the recommendation that we go with the least restrictive of the two and keep the language that states that signs may not extend more than eight feet above the roof line and strike the sentence in 71.1 that states, "Signs may not extend above the building's roof line and/or the wall upon which the sign is located."
So, in other words, to adopt the petition as presented?
Correct.
Okay. Do, I'll go to legal affairs first. Counsel Frida, do you have any questions or comments? None. Counsel Badanza?
No.
Okay. I don't either. Do any other members of the council have any questions or comments? Counsel Feckley?
Yes. And I apologize, I wasn't here for the subcommittee meeting, but, so you might have answered this question. But is this in answer to any particular petition that somebody has brought forward to the planning board?
No, this is, this is not. This is in response to public service in the building department, which I will defer to Peter Niall to speak to.
Yeah, this is just a housekeeping thing because we get phone calls a lot from out-of-state sign companies and they are very confused because it says they can not go above the roof line and then two pages later it says they can. And it's just so that everybody can understand it. Our sign part of the ordinance is a little confusing to begin with, and when it contradicts itself, very confusing. So that's all we're doing is trying to get the two to say the same thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, does any member of the audience wish to address the counsel either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the counsel either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the counsel either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, I'll just defer to my committee real quick. My recommendation would be to close the public hearing at this point. Counsel Frida?
Yeah, just real quick, just to make sure we got it straight. If a company were to come in here and buy a property that's already existing and they look at it the way the signs are, as long as they stick to the same footprint, they can put that sign up, right?
Yes, they can.
Okay. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't change the zoning for that particular sign?
No.
Okay.
Counsel Badanza?
I have a predilection on this and it's, to be frank, I like the more restrictive provision. So that might enter into your thinking whether or not you want to keep the hearing open or not. I think the planning director was quite candid with us, telling us that she's not sure how much thought went into this at the planning board level. And for that reason, I'm not one to like, I don't often like kicking the can down the road, but, and it's up to the chair, but I'm, I'm thinking, at least personally, that I like the more restrictive provision as opposed to the less restrictive provision, which is opposite of what the planning board and the petition says. So, I don't know if that enters your thinking about whether to close the hearing or not close the hearing.
I'll ask Counsel Frida her feelings on that.
I don't, I agree with Counsel from Y4, but I also wish the planning board would get some input from the business community. I mean, somebody might be planning on changing their signs or upgrading or whatever they want to do, and they should have some input as to what the signs look like. I understand you're only trying to clean it up because one says one thing, one says the other. But I'd like to see that some of the business community at least have some kind of input as to what their preference would be and see if you could go along with it.
I think they'd want the least restrictive.
Of course they'd want the least restrictive.
Just a guess.
Not rocket science, but...
Well, I'll, I mean, I'll go along with the majority of the committee. We can leave the public hearing open and we'll take it up later tonight.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So Chair, what is your desire? Shall we return to the meeting or are we dismissed?
Oh, you're good for tonight.
No, you're good for tonight. The clerk will get ahold of you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you sticking around.
We now have an, you're all set?
I'm all set, yeah.
Thank you. We now have an informational meeting with the mayor. Mayor, come on in. Any other school department officials you'd like to bring in, feel free to?
I'll be real brief. Just a few things to sort of speak to. One, I think, on the agenda is C-38, mayor to accept dug-in drive and Comstock. As you know, we have, the city council prepared a report, submitted to us, worked with the engineers, opened them to page to start to work on these. So we have our first success, which is this street. And so we'll continue on with all of them. We'll sort of chip away, as they say. And so that's before you, and I think you have referrals from planning and DPW, et cetera. And the other one is the appropriation for the Chromebooks. So some years ago, we started on sort of a more aggressive approach to technology in the schools. And so each year when we had certified free cash, we would come back and make appropriations somewhere around $250,000 or so to be put towards technologies in the schools. So I think we've reached that point where we're now borrowing Chromebooks from middle school for the high schools so they can complete things like MCAS. So the overall goal, and I visited a number of school departments across the state, talked to a number of people on exactly how this all sort of plays out. And so one of the school systems that I went to seems to match up exactly, pretty close to the amount of computers we would need overall, the size, district, pretty similar. So the way they do it is that in the middle school and high school were the first sort of tiers. I think we do okay in the elementary schools. But the way theirs works is they actually allow the students to take them home in the middle school, but at the end of the year, you have to turn it back in. And, but they do allow the high school students the ability to take them home and keep them all year until they're in their senior year, and then you get your diploma. When we get the diploma, you get the Chromebook. And they also have insurance that's sort of built into the system. And then there are a number of communities, I found, everybody does it differently, that offer students that might not have a hotspot or internet access in their home, they allow them to, it's similar, works similarly to, say, a library, where the student would be able to take it home with them and they'd have an electronic hotspot. So rather than get too far ahead of the school department, because remember, everybody has to be trained, and then we've got to make sure that the backbone of the system can handle each electronic device. And I suspect it works a lot like our system. The more electronic devices, the more you're drawing off. So you may give, you know, 100 Chromebooks out, but then there's probably, in a school, there's probably 300 or 400 electronic other devices that are starting drawing down. So the 250 will allow us to move forward, and then we'll come down with appropriations as the school department trains everybody. And then we build a backbone of the system and we'll appropriate those funds to help them support that backbone of the system. With the overall goal is to get access for Chromebooks in elementary and then access for students. And there's a bunch of ways that the school department can configure this. As I said, I visited a number of school systems. I've been reading up on this, I've been watching this, all the technology magazines, trade publications, and so there are a ton of different ways that you can do this. But this is the first appropriation for 250 Chromebooks. And hopefully, as we appropriate more and more money towards this, the price comes down and, again, we can, we're training people fast enough and the system is allowing the extra technology. So that's pretty straightforward. And I think, I didn't know if you had anything else that you needed, need to sort of address while you have me here.
Open it to the floor. Counsel Frida?
Could we just get the superintendent's opinion on the Chromebook? Or not in session?
There you are. I saw you and then I didn't.
Want to join us?
Sure.
Okay, come on in. Come on in, Senator.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, that's fine.
Good evening. Hi there.
Just, I'm just curious, following up on what the mayor said.
Yes.
I'm sure you agree, you've had a conversation in the school committee, but just what your feelings are about the Chromebooks and the process?
So, we've actually had several conversations. We know that that is the avenue we want to go down. We just want to make sure, we don't want to waste any money, time. We have to test our infrastructure. We've put a plan together back in August, how to roll them out. The head of IT, Steve Momoni, has worked with Dell Computers quite a bit. The Chromebooks, right now, have a shelf life of about four and a half to five and a half years with virus protection. So we have a plan to grow this up. We are mandated to test online. Textbooks now are online. It's cheaper with Chromebooks and accessibility than to constantly have to update textbooks and, you know, supplies and supplements that, it sort of levels the playing field. So we know that we want to go one-to-one. We have our documents ready to roll it out. Our main stay right now is the end of this year. We'd like to have every eighth grader have one. They can take that up through high school. And as the mayor said, we get the Chromebook back and then they get a diploma. So we're going to watch that. And so at the end of that five years, we can then take those Chromebooks and put them down in our lower level where we don't need as much capacity. So we want to make sure that we do it correctly. We have an infrastructure test going out next month for MCAS testing. Everybody has to take it online. We're going three through 10 for the first time. So we're a little nervous, so we want to make sure that we have the capacity and don't just waste funds. But it's definitely where we want to go. Even staff, we're buying staff Chromebooks. We can buy four Chromebooks for one laptop. It's what teachers need for educators, so we're testing out all those features right now.
In the same way that the teachers that we're hiring, I don't know, all the people that we've hired in the last couple of years, they're all on that sort of platform. That's paper and pencil to them is ancient, and so they're already coming out educated, they're ready to go on it. And so, you know, some will have to be trained, just like us. If we put, if we put all of us in there, some will learn faster than others, and that's exactly what. So we can roll this out a little at a time according to the needs of the school department. So again, we don't end up with a room full of, you know, 2,000, you know, Chromebooks that are already beginning to become outdated the minute you buy them. So this sort of, I know you've been working with ClercCom.
Yes.
You know, the company that we work with. And so they've really been helpful to us in helping us with our IT system.
ClercCom would work with you in terms of staging the bandwidth capacity?
Well, they work with us and they're working with the school department now. The school department will have to decide if they want to continue working with them or not. I mean, that's, I mean, we've had good success, but that's something they have to do. But, yeah, and they are just...
But that's one of the concerns, right? The amount of bandwidth that you need to run all this stuff?
So in some schools, like when you walk through some of the schools, be like, we really need internet. Well, we put internet in, the problem is, isn't that correct? I mean, they just draw, I mean, all these mobile devices, as soon as you put it on, you know, either Bluetooth or, you know, or sort of, you know, the automatic connection to the internet, you're on. Even if you know you're on, you're on, right? So that just draws down and draws down. So they'll look at the backbone of the system to make sure we can handle that. And, you know, the IT, the IT is just going to keep, you know, we start off with whiteboards, which was basically a computerized, you know, whiteboard rather than a blackboard. Well, that was 10 years ago or 12 years ago. Well, now everything is integrated, you know, the Chromebooks and the IT system, all integrated. And even to the point where if there's a student, I know a couple of years ago, they sort of rolled out this new program where if a student is, has a health problem and can't come to school, they can continue on with the lesson plan, you know, from the class. And it won't be much longer where there'll be a visual part where they'll be able to just connect to the classroom.
We have it now.
Yeah.
It's a V-Gro. It's a robot.
That's it.
So that the child can still be in the classroom virtually. So we're moving in that direction.
So we'll wait to hear how the backbone of the system is. If there's additional funding needed for that, then we'll, it'll be down for another appropriation. And then when they need, when they're ready for the next batch of Chromebooks, then obviously we'll, but this will at least take care, hopefully, as soon as we can get them updated so we don't have to keep moving around from the high school back to the middle school, back to the high school in the same. So, I mean, this may take a little while. It may take, you know, a year, 18 months, but at the end of the day, you know, everyone will be there. In the meantime, labs?
Yes.
If you want to talk a little bit about that.
Yes. So our labs, right now, we can test. The last soft spot we had was the high school because they are going live with us. So it was really gracious to have the mayor step up and say, you know, what do we need? This will be that piece. So we're not ready for students to take them home yet. So we're using every available computer space. We're pulling in pieces right now. There will be thousands of children, probably about 4,000 children testing at the same time in the city. So...
Mr. President?
I'm sorry. Counselor?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Superintendent. And that kind of opens the door for my question. I think this is a great step in the right direction. I think this is wonderful. So I don't want to take anything away from this appropriation, but I did want to ask you. So if there are 4,000 kids throughout the system taking the MCAS, you know, 250 Chromebooks, it seems like a drop in the bucket. So how, because I'm assuming a lot of kids, 1,000 kids at a time?
Right.
Are all being tested at the same time?
Correct. So currently, this actually helped us at the high school. We should be pretty solid there. We have been purchasing Chromebooks over the last few years. On top of updating, every school has at least one to two computer labs. So some students are hardwired and others are on Chromebooks. So alternate days, we will do grade three across, the state does testing on one day, and then grade four. So as long as we have the capacity, which we do now, this helped us not to have to borrow. Once you start transporting technology, something's going to get broken, a wire, you know, and then it's that blame game. So this, these are solely for the high school. We had a few hundred there, so we can do the freshman class at one time and sophomore class when they need to. So right now, we're okay. But we continue to invest in technology. It's a priority right now.
Absolutely great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
M.M.A. So my understanding, Superintendent, is that you're going to give these to the eighth graders. They will essentially keep these Chromebooks until they graduate, right?
Yes. That's our goal.
That's your goal. Okay. Now suppose, you know, the insurance that the mayor mentioned, is that for lost or not returned Chromebooks?
They have this all worked out.
We have it all worked out.
Okay.
If they break the lens, there's so many chances that you can, I believe it's four chances of any damage, they cover it.
They cover it.
So we've looked into all of that because that, that could be a potential expense.
Right. Or suppose they just take them and move out of town?
We'll come find you.
Huh?
We'll come find you.
Okay.
We need our Chromebooks.
But the insurance doesn't cover that?
Lost or damaged. We'll go with the lost.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify for the public, this is a separate appropriation, so this isn't something extra that's coming out of the school budget?
No, 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 no. This is an extra appropriation. And I'll talk in a second about some of the other work that we're doing around the schools and then, but no, this is a separate appropriation.
And I would ask you to just touch on that because I have had a few people ask and they're not understanding that the money is a separate appropriation. They're saying, how can, you know...
So the budget has already been passed.
Okay.
You passed it in June, so that's, that's done with. This is a separate appropriation. And it just as if the superintendent comes back and says, we need some, you know, hardware to upgrade the system, that'll be another separate appropriation. And then later, whether it's this year, hopefully this year before the end of the year, or next year, it'll be a separate from the regular budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Feckley?
Yeah, just following up on Counsel Cormier's question. I have gotten a couple of concerns about it too from constituents. So I understand it's a separate appropriation, but just if you could just give us a few words on, is this something that just came to the forefront and why wasn't it in the requested budget for this fiscal year?
Sure.
Did you buy Chromebooks initially?
Yes, we have been buying Chromebooks right along. This, we look at, we were willing to share if we had to. Going into this tight fiscal year, we were going to do whatever it took to make sure that we lived within our means, we get the job done. So if we had to, our Chromebooks right now are in carts. So if we had to transport, we could transport. It's not ideal, but we were willing to do that. So this is really a gift so that that piece doesn't have to happen. And then we had money from the displaced students that we've used, so we keep knocking away at this. So we're in good shape. We want to be in great shape, though. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor?
Yeah, just, I'm sure you're well aware of it, but with all the emphasis on technology, do you anticipate any possible grants that might be coming down the road?
We look at that all the time. So like I said, the displaced money, a lot of that has gone to technology, right into the classroom. We have curriculum staff back that is looking at grant opportunities all the time, so we're hopeful.
The only thing I think we might be able to use for low to moderate income students is we might be able to, you know, we have to check with HUD, but it's possibility for the kids that need a hotspot. You know, they'd be limited to, you know, to using it with their Chromebooks. That might be an opportunity if they took them home and they needed, you know, a class assignment, they needed to use, you know, three or four hours of it or whatever it might be. Low to moderate income students might be eligible. As a package, we may be able to say, you know, we need, I don't know, $25,000 a year to, you know, provide lendable hotspots.
Excellent.
That's the only thing that I can think of we might be able to use.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
And then just one other thing that involves the school department is, so we've spent, as you know, we've spent, we've been fortunate with working with the state. We've been really lucky and we've, everything we've applied for, we've gotten. So we've done roofs and windows and boilers and just about everything else to sort of get the buildings up to par. So the next step is ask the superintendent to give me a list of sort of, maybe some of the safety issues that might be on the outside of the buildings. So for instance, when you leave the CTEI, you leave the restaurant, you know, the granite curbing is higher than the actual pavement, and that's a trip and fall situation. So what we decided in talking, so we have a good list to work from, and again, we'll not chip away, we'll make good dents in it this year, but what we're going to try to do is bundle it up with our sidewalk program. So wait a little longer, but when we put it all out to bid, we'd probably get a better price rather than do it separately between the school department and us. So we'll bundle a whole sidewalk project together and then, you know, bid it out that way. So that's, that's pretty much how we're going to handle that. So they gave us a good list to work on and that will not only make it safer, but it's been a lot of years before, you know, I keep calling Skyview the new school, but in reality, you know, it's not, it's not new anymore and you've got some settling in situations where they pose a danger for people using the buildings. And the stair set where as you're walking up on the side of the high school, places like that, you notice, you know, and you notice when there's an event, you're like, oh no, this is, this is not, you know, this isn't, this isn't good. This is a safety issue. So we'll work on that, you'll get an appropriation once we get a, you know, a rough bid on, estimate on what the bids will be. So sidewalks, if you have sidewalks, we're trying to get them around the schools and then into the neighborhoods. So if there are sidewalks, by all means, let us know. And we have a list, but we'll cross-reference them, worst first, most used first, and then, and again, we'll bundle this in into the whole program.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. All set?
That's it for me.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
We'll do the public forum right now. Public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone, state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first speaker, Sandra Murphy.
Hi, everyone.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I get it all the time. Hi, I'm Sandra Murphy. I live in Berlin, Mass., not in Leominster, unfortunately. So I have, I just wanted to speak on C-44. So I just wanted to tell you a little back history about our public copiers. When I first got to the library almost a year ago, the previous administration and staff had been working on getting a set of copiers, public copiers. After eight months of working with the company that we had been, that had, we had selected, the copiers still hadn't been functioning the way that they, we were told that they were to be set up. So one of them wouldn't function at all because they couldn't find the right cable. The other one, the coin machine, wouldn't work properly. So I kind of had to make a choice, like, let's just cut ties with them altogether and find someone new. So at the same time, I hired a new technology librarian, Brittany. She's wonderful and she sought out this company, Toshiba. And they have some set aside for us that are really excellent, top of the line, but aren't like over the top, what we wouldn't need in a public library. We do a lot of printing for the public. So now we'll be able to accept credit cards, which is huge. Before, it was only cash, yes, you know. And it'll all be one-stop shopping. There's two machines. All the computers can print to one of the machines, and then there's another one for public printing. So it's going to be a great setup, I think. And my goal was to make it more like Staples, so people can just come in. It's seamless, they know how to use it. It's not too tricky, but it does everything that you can need to do. They also scan. So before, you had to use this fax machine, which was also used as a scanner, so that cost $1.75 per page. Now scanning will be free. You can scan right to your USB if you want to plug that in. So I think it's going to be really great and really streamline the process. So since I'm asking for an appropriation, I thought it would be appropriate for me to come and say hi. Haven't seen you guys in a while. So that's all.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down today.
Thanks, yeah. Have a great night.
You also. Peter Campabasso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the city council, my name is Peter Campabasso. I appear on behalf of Middlesex Integrative Medicine, petition 19-19. They are seeking a letter of non-opposition from the Leominster City Council, which will allow them to complete their application with the Cannabis Control Commission in Boston to locate a registered marijuana dispensary in Waltham. The correct address is 305 Second Ave. I think the last time I was here, I requested that the petition I submitted initially be amended to incorporate that change. I believe at the subcommittee meeting that was held earlier, we addressed the concerns that were raised regarding the community host agreement the last, the last time. And I would respectfully ask that the council act favorably upon the petition.
Thank you.
If there's any further questions, we'll remain in the, the chamber.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That's the last person that signed up. Is there any other member of the audience who would like to address the council second time? In the third and final call? If not, the public forum is closed. Thank you. Very good. The city council is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
We'll begin the meeting with a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ottinger.
Present.
Counselor Badanza.
Present.
Counselor Feckley.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
All nine members are present. Is the chairwoman of records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have the minutes of September 10th, 2018, September 24th, 2018, November 13th, 2018, November 26th, 2018, and January 14th, 2019. And I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on record. I do not have a copy of the organizational meeting minutes, so I will not be able to present them to you this evening. Any minutes that, like, the minutes of December 10th, we had already approved. So, any that were not, are not on this list were already approved.
Check your email.
Okay.
Clerk's indicated that they're, they were forward.
Okay.
Okay, there could be a glitch.
The January 7th?
There could definitely be a glitch.
Okay.
So, if not, we'll get you a hard copy.
Okay.
I had some issues with my email on Friday.
Yeah.
Didn't go through, and I got pinged back on Sunday.
Okay.
We heard that from one of the speakers earlier tonight at the meeting.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you. Any questions on the minutes? Thank you. So moved. We'll now move on to communications from the May, beginning with communication 45.
C-45, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $192,000 to the Fire Department Salary and Wages account, same amount to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining and Expense account regarding to fund first-year fiscal year 2019 contract settlement for fiscal year 2019 through fiscal 2021 agreement.
Communication 45 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course has been given to C-45. Communication 46.
C-46, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $31,250 to the Fire Department Overtime Account, same amount to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Account regarding to fund increased costs associated with contract settlement.
Communication 46 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Same circumstance, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication 46. Thank you. We now have petitions, first time on the calendar, beginning with 23-19.
23-19, Officer Patrick S. Bresnahan, requesting a 30-minute parking sign be placed in front of what is now the Florida D'Jour Flower Boutique located at 5 West Street.
23-19 is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the traffic agent of the Leominster Police Department.
Thank you. 23-19 has been given regular course. Do we have anything else? Okay. We now have matters before the city council. And before we get into the financials, out of courtesy to the representative from Roll On America, I'm gonna ask for the council to recess. Do I have a motion on the floor? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, seconded by Counselor Pauline Cormier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. We're now recessed. I'm gonna yield the floor to the chairman of legal affairs, and if we can invite the young lady in from Roll On America. Thank you. Come on right in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This is...
So, people understand, we don't do this normally, and we kinda frown upon it, but this is a professional courtesy to the petitioner who couldn't be here tonight. And it was a little bit of a glitch as far as how we're gonna be able to continue moving forward with it. So, this is why we've recessed at this point. Okay? John?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This is communication 24. Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, allow Roll On America to connect into the Leominster Water System through a special act of the legislature. If you could just identify yourself.
Sure. My name is Jamie Cortez. I am the general manager for Roll On America. The owners live out of state, so they have asked me to be here in lieu of them.
Okay, and if you could give us just a, just a brief summary of exactly what the facility is trying to do.
Sure. I'm not sure, did the letter go through your email earlier, Caitlin?
Yeah.
It did, okay, so they have it. Okay, perfect. So, we are obviously located on the Lancaster-Leominster line, technically Lancaster, however, there are no Lancaster water lines near there to hook up to. So, we are requesting to get hooked into Leominster's water. We're right next door to Orchard Hills, which already has an intermunicipality agreement, I believe. We were, I know there's two different ways that, or I think there are two, there are different ways it can be done, special act of legislature or the intermunicipality agreement. We had started the process in the past with the petition for the legislator, legislature. So, that's how we were told to go forward this time. But I know at the last meeting that concerns were brought up for cost-effective reasons that might be more conducive to go with an intermunicipality agreement. We obviously will go whatever way is best, but that is what we were requesting.
Okay. I'll go to legal affairs first. Counselor Frida, do you have any questions? Any comments?
No, I just remember it back in the day when, you know, the possibility was there because the line was going to Orchard Hills, so I, I get it. I understand it, so.
Okay. Counselor Badanza?
I, I'm sort of concerned as to why this comes up now and what the plan is for the property. Is it, is the plan to continue to operate the property as it's currently used, or is there development plans, or why does this come up now?
The state would rather everyone be on town water versus a well and things like that, which is what we've been on. Previously, they wanted to do it, but financially, they weren't able to in the past to proceed with the project. Now, it's a little more financially doable for them. There are no changes in place, no additions, no changes or anything like that, just kind of status quo, just trying to do the best for the business and the town and the community as we serve.
Has the, has your, is the company retained counsel to help guide this process, or is this something that you're relying on the city of Leominster to provide?
We have not obtained counsel yet, just because we weren't sure which direction we should be going in. We could at that point. We know there's already that agreement with Orchard Hills, so we weren't sure what the process would have to be to go, to go forward.
I'm all set.
Does any other counselor have any questions or comments? If I could just inquire, did we have any luck getting ahold of Roger Brooks? Or anyone at the DPW that could come down and talk about this issue?
I had invited the DPW director and Roger Brooks, but I didn't hear back.
Okay. Okay. At this point, I mean, this is really just a subcommittee meeting, so I think I would just close, close this, close this meeting for now, and we'll take it up later on in the agenda.
Right.
Okay? Unless there's any objection from my fellow committee members?
No, I think we need to talk with the DPW. They definitely need to come in here.
Yeah. Okay.
So, you're proposing to, you're not proposing to close the hearing?
Well, it's not a hearing, it's just a subcommittee meeting that we...
Well, we have an open meeting with the council as a whole right now, just to share information. Other than that, we'll adjourn at that level.
Yeah.
And then you'll pick it up again in subcommittee.
Yep. Okay, so we'll, we'll address it later on tonight.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And now, I'll now yield the floor to the chairman of finance.
Yes, Mr. President. C-39, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $575,000 to the stabilization fund, same amount to be transferred from the Recreation Department Capital Outlay Expense Account. This was passed back on January 14th, and it is on our calendar this evening to rescind the vote, or I'm sorry, to rescind the appropriation of December 10th, 2018, because the project for which this money was appropriated did not receive the grant, which was sort of the expectation, because we, we applied for two grants, hoping to get one. I guess that's what occurred. There was some outside chance that we might get two. So, two appropriations were made. This one no longer becomes necessary as a result of the fact that the grant that was obtained was for the other project, which was the Mechanic Street project. And this, again, again, is before us to rescind it, return the money to the general fund. And I would ask you, Mr. President, to check with members of my committee, but I'm in favor of rescinding the vote.
Thank you. I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
There are a member, Counselor David Cormier.
Yeah, I'm sad to have to do so, but I don't think there's any other option, so I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please qualify.
So, the unanimous recommendation of finance is to rescind the appropriation relative to C-39.
Thank you. Counselor, the recommendation to rescind communication 39. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, it has been rescinded. Thank you. We'll now move on to communication 40, Mr. Chairman.
C-40, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $9,500 to the city clerk expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding a software update. This is to modernize the way the city clerk's office processes vital statistics. We have a letter from the clerk to the mayor dated June 8th, 2019, regarding additional appropriation for software upgrade. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, I respectfully request an additional appropriation of now $9,500. This appropriation would allow the office to acquire vital software upgrades for business certificates, vital records, and boards, and commissions databases. Additionally, this would provide us with the funds to acquire two licenses for Adobe Acrobat Pro DC, which would allow us to make PDF fillable forms. Obtaining this software allows us to digitize our records, provide more customer service to citizens online, and minimize the use of paper in the office. Enclosed, please find the software proposal from the vendor, LL Data Designs LLC. We are currently using their software for our dog licensing database, and it exceeds expectations. We would like to upgrade all of our software with them to keep consistency and provide the best possible customer service to the citizens of Leominster. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me. I appreciate your time and consideration for this matter. Respectfully, Caitlin Huffman. And attached to her letter is the quote, you know, proposal from LL Data Designs in the amount of $9,580 total. Mr. Chairman, it would be my production to grant C-40, and I'd ask you to check with my members of my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Counselor Pauline Cormier. Counselor David Cormier, there are a member.
I also agree.
Please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. It is unanimous recommendation of finance to grant C-40.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation read to grant communication 40. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, the communication has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $9,500 be appropriated to the city clerk expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, that recommendation read. Are there any comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to communication 41.
C-41, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $4,000 to the Police Department Overtime Account, same to be transferred from the Disability Fines Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account, are we parking enforcement details? This is something that we do from time to time. We collect fines for people parking in the wrong places, and then we appropriate the money to the Police Department Overtime Budget so that they can step up enforcement and make sure that the handicap parking laws and other laws are enforced. There's a letter from the Secretary of the Disability Commission asking for the monies to be withdrawn from the account and sent to the Police Department for enforcement. Would be my position to grant C-41, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you. I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
There are a member, Counselor David Cormier.
I serve on the Disabilities Commission, and I am also the treasurer of the commission, so I need to abstain.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor back to the chairman for recommendation.
Yes, Mr. President. The recommendation of the remaining members of finance is unanimous to grant C-41.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation read to grant communication 41. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of eight to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $4,000 be appropriated to the Police Department Overtime Account, same to be transferred from the Disability Fines Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, counsel's heard recommendation on that communication. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to communication 42.
C-42, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $6,600 to the Highway Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is relative to the purchase of OSHA requirement supplies. There's a letter from the mayor dated June 10th, 2019, to the council. As you know, communities across the United States are working to comply with increased OSHA regulations, particularly for the Department of Public Works. This will be expensive, extensive. We were able to secure a grant from the MIAA, that's the city's insurance company, for $6,800. I'm requesting that the balance to assist in complying with this year's regulations be appropriated. So, the total confirmation of this order, or proposed order, from a company called Cintas, is $13,367, and this is covering such things as a first aid station, a 16-gallon eye station, eye wash station service, a, and a various other equipment for safety, safety purposes, there's a cabinet for the storage of certain safety items and et cetera. Would be my position to grant C-42, and I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the second member, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
There are a member, Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
Back to the chairman for confirmation.
Yes, Mr. President. Unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-42.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation read to grant communication 42. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, communication 42's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $6,600 be appropriated to the Highway Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, counsel's heard recommendation read. Are there any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of eight, nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those opposed by vote of eight, nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 43.
C-43, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $92,000 to School Department expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding purchase of Chromebooks. We had the mayor here this evening in an informational capacity, along with the superintendent of schools. This request is to purchase 250 Chromebooks for use in the school system. We heard information as to how those were going to be deployed and how they fit into the general scheme of upgrading the technology for the students of Leamester. And it would be my position, based on that, to grant C-43. Mr. President, I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Third member, Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-43.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, that recommendation read to grant Communication 43. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $92,000 be appropriated to the School Department expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Counselor, the recommendation read. To adopt the order on Communication 43, are there any last comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 44.
C-44, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $13,000 to the Library expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. There's a letter from the mayor dated January 10th. I respectfully request that an appropriation of $13,000 be made to the Library expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding the purchase of two clock machines for the library for public use. The library director was here earlier this evening and spoke in a public forum about the necessity of this equipment, and how it would be used and deployed, and how it would enhance the customer experience of our library patrons. It would be my position to grant C-44. Mr. President, I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Third member, Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-44.
Counselor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 44. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $13,000 be appropriated to the Library expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Counselor, that recommendation read on Communication 44. Again, are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's also to your committee members. Is there anything else on the finance tonight?
All set for this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, did we give the report?
We have a financial report, Counselor.
I don't, I do not have one.
Okay.
It was...
Oh.
Well, when are we, you're gonna have time to review that.
I can get, I can, it's gonna just be an update of the stabilization fund, which I can do very quickly.
Go ahead.
So we started the fiscal year on July 1st, 2018, with a balance in the stabilization account of $15,113,865. There were additions to that account from interest earnings, tonight's rescission of C-28, and a transfer written from free cash totaling $4,692,75, using the whole dollar method. And since the beginning of the fiscal year, we have transferred out or approved, including this evening, an amount totaling $2,531,600, leaving a balance to date in stabilization of $17,274,340.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on the report? If not, again, thank you very much. We'll now move on to Legal Affairs. Mr. Chairman, you ready to report on Communication 24?
I am. Mr. President, Communication 24, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, allow Roll On America to connect into the Leamester water system through a special act of the legislature. We had the representative speak tonight in a subcommittee meeting. We do have, we do have a slew of letters that were submitted, and I know that some members of Legal Affairs were in favor of perhaps having another subcommittee meeting and having Roger Brooks or a representative from
Right.
the DPW come down. I would note that one of the letters dated, one of the letters that we got on this from the DPW director is recommending approval. And we also have a letter from Brian Riley, Legal Affairs Committee, where they've indicated that the Special Act of the Legislature is a better way to go than, than the intermunicipal agreement, which, which is different.
Do you have a date on that letter, by the way?
Yeah, it's, it's dated November 26th, 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So before I read all the letters, I'll just go to my committee real quick to see if they want to take action tonight based on these letters, or if they want to take it into subcommittee one more time.
Do you have the floor, Counselor Frida?
I think we need to have another meeting, because some of these letters are old. Some of the opinions, I think we need to get updated. I mean, I'm, I'm supportive. I think we, barring any kind of issues, but I think we need to get some estimates on water usage. And just standard questions that need to be answered.
I tend to agree with you, but I'll go to the third member as well.
Third member, Counselor Bidanza.
I have many concerns about this. I'm concerned about what the rates that we're gonna collect for the water. I'm concerned about the legal fees we're gonna expend in order to do this. So far, they haven't spent a dime to have someone guide this process in a professional way. Concerned about that. I'm concerned about what the ultimate plan is with this property. I, I need a lot of things answered.
Yeah, I can tell you, I don't believe the out-of-town water rates have been addressed in 14 years.
Right.
So there's been a subpassage.
Let me just grab this for one second, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Officially, Mr. Roger Brooks, who spearheaded that department, has retired.
Right, I know that.
So that's, that's an official thing. We did send out a friendly gesture, see if he would come. I mean, he could be on vacation somewhere, I have no idea. Hopefully, he is. That's what he deserves. So we're gonna have to find out what the protocol is right now for the filling of that position, and find out if Mr. Racine has someone they can bring up, get it, you know, up to snuff with the information that's happened with the athletic club, and see if they can take it from that point right there. I don't, I don't want to refer one thing to anyone at this point. I don't want to spend another penny of taxpayers' dollars in the city of Leamester on an out-of-city proposal that's gonna cost our taxpayers money. So I agree with the legal piece, for example. A letter as simple as what you saw could cost literally hundreds of dollars to get to that point, as we know, sometimes even thousands. So I want to just hold it and let Roll On America take the lead on it. They can work with the mayor's office or the clerk, and we'll get a handle on it. But I think, you know, they've got a, there has to be some ownership here. Anybody can come in with a proposal at any time, and it costs the citizens $5,000, for example, and nothing ever materializes. I don't think that's fair. Counselor Bidanza.
I, I'm okay with table on this for study until they come forward with just that, you know, at least an attorney that comes in here and explains
Right.
their process, and I don't want to see this cost our taxpayers' money. And at this point, this is all on us, and it's not our accommodation. It's their accommodation. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm happy with table on this for study, until they can convince you as chair to take this off the table because they've done some homework. That's my position.
Yeah, I can't, I can't disagree with the comments or the points being made. Counselor Frida?
Just for the record, Roger Brooks is working two days a week.
Well, this is what the clerk indicated. Is he still working, or is he retired?
He is working two days a week. I spoke with him.
He's looking good.
So he's
He's not, he's retired officially, but...
He's officially retired, but he's being contracted by the city, so that's good. Maybe we can snag him one more time for this. Good point.
All right. So I, I can go along with tabling this for study. Counselor Frida?
Yeah, I, I can table, and I think some of the legal issues would be easy enough to, I mean, wouldn't cost the taxpayer any money if we said this is how it's gonna go, but you have to pay X, Y, and Z. I mean, we still have some control over it. And the DPW, I mean, the biggest thing is, do we have the water to spare? That's the biggest issue. And what are we gonna charge? And then go from there. Is it feasible, is it not? But if you want to table it, I don't have a problem tabling it, but I want to, I'd want to have the DPW as soon as possible before he does officially retire those last two days.
Sure, I appreciate that. Counselor Bidanza?
It's your, your call. I just, I put the onus on them, not us. That's my, that's my whole thing.
All right, recommendation will be to table this for study.
Thank you. Counselor, the recommendation read to table Communication 24. Are there any comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, it has been tabled. Thank you. We'll now move on to C-38. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, Communication 38, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, to accept dug-and-drive in Comstock Road as public ways. We did get, we do have quite a bit of literature on this matter. There was a copy of the report generated by the, by the Street Acceptance Subcommittee that they put together, I want to say two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, just, just giving us some background on, on where we stand in the city with these unaccepted streets. There's a letter dated January 9th, 2019, from Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, to the Leamester City Council. Dear members of the City Council, as you know, unaccepted streets have been a challenge in the city for quite some time. Working with the council, the city has started the process of accepting these streets. The attached petition represents acceptance of dug-and-drive and Comstock Road as public ways. Following approval, the streets will be placed in our traditional process of fixing the worst first through Chapter 90. Thank you for your consideration. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. We also have a letter dated January 10th, 2019, received by the City Clerk on January 14th, 2019. This is from Copelman and Page. The ray line is layout and acceptance of dug-and-drive and Comstock Road as public ways. Dear members of the City Council, you have requested an opinion concerning petition Communication 38, which was submitted to the City Council, requesting that the city lay out and accept dug-and-drive and Comstock Road, the roads, as public ways. The city engineer has confirmed that the dimensions of the roads as constructed on the ground match the dimensions of the roads as shown on a plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan Land in Leamester, Mass., owned by the Northwoods Development Corp., dated July 23rd, 1985, recorded with the Worcester North District Registry of Deeds in Book 284, page 25. The plan suffices as the city's layout plan. I set forth below the steps the city needs to take to lay out and accept the roads as public ways. Layout of roads as public ways. Number one, planning board referral. To commence the layout process, the City Council needs to refer the petition and a copy of the plan to the planning board for a non-binding recommendation or report. The planning board may make such investigations as it deems advisable. The planning board is not required to make a recommendation report. If the planning board elects to render a report, the report may include plans and a description of the location, indoor condition of the subdivision roadway. At a minimum, the report should include a recommendation as to whether the city should accept the proposed layouts of the roads and any other pertinent information. The planning board should vote to accept the report and file a copy with the City Clerk. Number two, order of layout. The next step is for the City Council to adopt and sign the enclosed order of layout at a public meeting. An order of layout is, in essence, a formal recognition of the meets and bounds or the layout of the roads. Note that this next step cannot occur until the planning board submits its report, recommendation, or 45 days pass since the layouts were referred without any response from the planning board, whichever is earlier. The City Council is not required to conduct a public hearing or to notify abutters in order to adopt the order of layout, but may choose to do so. The plan in the signed order of layout must be filed with the City Clerk. Acceptance of roads as public ways. In order to complete the public way acceptance process, the city needs to acquire an easement to use and to allow members of the public to use the roads as public ways. Such rights can be acquired by a grant from those who own the roads or by eminent domain. Based on my discussion with the city engineer and my review of the records of the Worcester North District Registry of Deeds, the fee to the roads is owned by Northwoods Development Corp., the developer, the developer of the subdivision. Since the developer reserved the fee in the roads in each of the deeds by which the developer conveyed the lots abutting the roads, the developer is the sole owner of the roads. The lot owners were granted easements to use the roads. However, it appears that the developer no longer exists as a legal entity in Massachusetts, as the developer filed a certificate of withdrawal with the Secretary of State's office in 1987. It also no longer exists in New Hampshire, where the developer was originally registered. Since the city is unable to obtain an easement by a grant from the developer, the city may nevertheless acquire such rights by eminent domain. I have enclosed an order of taking by which the city will take an easement to use the roads for all purposes for which roadways are used in the city. Note that an owner of property whose land has been taken by eminent domain is entitled to damages if the land taken has any value or the taking affects the value of the remaining land. In my opinion, the city is unlikely to owe any damages, as the roads are already being used for access by the abutters and others. In adopting the order vote, the City Council should state that no damages are due for the taking. The order of taking may be signed at the same meeting at which the City Council signs the order of layout or at a later date. The order of taking must be recorded with, I think it means to say, within 30 days of the date on which the City Council votes on the taking. Please send me the original order of taking for recording. Once the order of taking is on record, I will send a notice of taking to the former offices, officers of the developer. Please let me know if you have any questions or need additional assistance regarding this matter. Very truly yours, signed by Attorney Sheeran Everett. And she attached the order of taking in the Schedule A. We also have a letter dated January 16th, 2019, from the Department of Public Works. It's addressed to the City Clerk. The Leamester Department of Public Works has reviewed this request and offers the following comments. The DPW approves the communication as submitted. Please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Raymond Racine, DPW Director. Mr. President, so I, I think that our first step is to formally refer
We did that.
We did that?
We did that at the last meeting.
Formally?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're in a holding pattern now for 45 days?
Pretty simple from this point. For all I know, it could be on the, your agenda tonight.
The planning board's actually going to be reviewing this tonight, after I've thought.
All right, so... So they have the layout plan. They have our formal referral.
Yep.
If they send us back something for our next meeting, we could act. If they don't, we'll have to wait or wait till the 45 days. Once, once we have the 45 days expired or their recommendation, we can move forward on the, the two orders. Once we sign off the two orders, there's no damages due. We send them back to Attorney Everett, and we're, we're good.
So the only, the only remaining question is, is if we want to give abutters notice or not.
We don't have to.
I guess, we don't have to. I guess, we can if we want, but we don't have to.
We don't have to, and, and at this point, it all becomes simple, really.
Yeah.
And I agree that there's no chance that, that the former entity or anybody associated was gonna get any damages out of this.
Right.
Okay. Counselor Frida, your thoughts?
I think we should give the abutters notice. I think we should be as open as can be. I'm very supportive of this, because we need to start the process. But Northwoods has damaged a lot of people throughout the city, and I want to be sure we do this one right, because it's gonna be the sample of what we do for other properties. There are many developers back in the 80s that, you know, have hurt a lot of areas, and if we start cleaning them up, we need to do it the right way. So, I mean, we're gonna give this further time tonight, anyway, or table it, whichever you decide to do. But I think we need to follow a process with this and make sure we do it the right way. So notifying the abutters, I think, is a good idea, and at least be transparent with it.
All right, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, so I...
I don't have a major, the, the issue is the expense of it.
Yeah.
I don't know who would object to this. Like, you'd have to have rocks in your head to object to this. So, I mean, there's a, there's a, listen, we, Counselor Cormier and I have met with the abutters. Trust me, they are more than happy to have this.
Oh, no, no, I, I understand that.
Do we want to spend the money? I, I'm not so sure. It's not cheap, because we have to have the abutters list created, and it's gonna be circulated, but that's your call. I'm okay with either way.
Counselor Cormier?
Can I just add one more thing?
We haven't made a recommendation yet.
Still in committee? Okay.
The, the, the point is, is that, other than that, this is, I'm hopeful that the planning board will send us a recommendation for our next meeting. So I would rec, my recommendation would be further time, because we have to. And then if we have that recommendation from the planning board, we should be able to move forward on the two orders. They're already prepared.
No, I agree.
So we'd be in really good shape, and we could get two streets off of that list, which is
Right.
we should have a celebration, I think.
All right, well, well...
Mr. Chairman, what do you think?
What's the drawback to contacting the abutters?
Cost.
How much? A mail, a stamp? I mean, how much are you talking about?
If I may.
Seven dollars per envelope. It's certified mail.
All right, how many do we have? All right, and how many do we have?
At least 50.
I mean, I don't disagree that.
Yeah, we probably talking, you're talking, well, you're also talking a lot of time for the clerk's office. You know, I mean, so it's, it's not just the seven bucks. You're talking 300, 400 bucks worth of time and postage, which, that's what you want to do. I'm not going to stand.
I want to do it right.
I understand, I understand.
That's what I want to do.
I understand the motivation to it, okay? But sometimes reasonable minds can differ. If that's what you want, I'm not going to stand in the way.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Mr. Chairman?
I'll take over this now.
Go ahead.
We're gonna, we're gonna, recommendation is going to be further time. I don't, I don't think the notice needs to be certified mail. I think, I think we can send regular mail. And just to.
Not a public hearing.
Just to, you know, a very simple notice, regular mail, to the, to the people that live on those streets.
Here's your next question. For when? Because.
Well, we'll find out.
Well, that.
When we get the recommendation, if we get, I'm assuming we'll have it back from the planning board within the week.
In the next couple of days.
Okay.
If we don't.
Right, that's my point. If we don't, then we have to wait the 45 days.
Right.
I don't want this to go another day longer than it has to.
Right.
That's my point. Not one extra day.
So we'll stay, we'll stay on top of it and see what the planning board does tonight.
Okay.
But the recommendation will be further time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor, sir, the recommendation for further time on Communication 38. Are there any comments or questions? Counselor Cormier?
Yeah, I just want to say that I believe that the mayor's office has sent out some notice to the abutters. I was speaking to people earlier, they've gotten something in the mail. And when I did have a conversation with the mayor's office about a month or so ago about this.
Okay.
He did indicate, or his office indicated that they were to send out a letter, so we might want to check with them and see what list they have. And, you know, maybe we can compare it to the, you know, all the lots there and make sure that everybody was included and, and just, you know.
Yeah, not duplicate efforts.
That might satisfy what we've, what we're talking about now, so.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, if you can work with the clerk on that?
Yeah, I can do that, sure.
Okay, good. Any other comments or questions? If not, the recommendations for further time on Communication 38. All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded to Communication 38. We now move on to Petition 19-19. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am. Petition 19-19, approve a local letter of support or non-opposition to Middlesex Integrative Medicine for a proposed retail registered marijuana dispensary, RMD, to be located at 305 Second Avenue, Waltham, Mass., to be signed by the mayor or the duly authorized members of the Lemonster City Council. We had a subcommittee meeting tonight. The petitioner came down with his, with his attorney, explained to us that when they got the original special permit with the city of Lemonster to, to cultivate medical marijuana, that they had a limit of three possible dispensaries. There was one approved, and now they are trying to get a second one approved in the city of Waltham. In order to get that, in order for that process to occur for them, they need a letter of non-opposition from us. I, I don't understand that, but that is the regulation currently with the state. They, there wasn't an issue addressed with a perceived error in the host agreement. They've taken care of contacting the mayor to amend that, so that error is no longer present. There is also an issue of the actual wording of the letter of non-opposition. We're provided a template. The last sentence of that paragraph was a little murky. So, I, I mean, I, I see this as largely ministerial, and, and my opinion, my recommendation would be to grant Petition 19-19 on the condition that we do get a copy of the amended signed host agreement, and we also get clarification from counsel relative to, and when I say counsel, I mean counsel for the petitioner relative to that last sentence. So that would be my recommendation. But, you know, I do, I do understand this is all new to everybody, so we're all struggling with this, so I'll see what my committee members have to say, Mr. President.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Frida.
I don't support that. I think the, the, the petitioner clearly stated that he could go a little bit extra time. I think we need to talk to Waltham. That was clear, and talking to the building inspector, talk to, for the council not to have any idea that this is being proposed, I think that's a question.
The council.
And I'm not saying there's anything.
The council on Waltham.
Waltham, right.
Right, okay.
And I, we're going to amend a host, I mean, to condition amending a host agreement and amending a template, why don't we just give it further time? We can be checking those things and do it the right way in two weeks.
I yield the floor to the third member, Counselor Bonanza.
I am in agreement with the chair. We, I do agree that this is ministerial. I like the chair, I'm a little confused as to why this is even required. I think it's, I think in some ways it's a bit of overkill, but it is required by the Triple C. As Attorney Kipabasso suggested, this is an RMD, this is not adult-use marijuana. RMDs are now within the jurisdiction as of December of Triple C, no longer DPH. All we're doing is giving them the right to get the site approved by Triple C, so then they can go to Waltham and pursue their special permit. That's the reason why the Waltham council doesn't know about it, because they haven't petitioned the Waltham council for a special permit, because they don't have the site profile finished with Triple C. So, in the process of looking at all of this, I noticed that the host agreement suggests that if the state taxes medical marijuana, a real possibility, that the inventory fee we would get, or are supposed to get under this eventually, would go away. So, as a quid pro quo of our support or a letter of non-opposition, they've agreed to amend it so that we get our inventory fee, whatever happens with taxation. So I agree with the chair that this would be conditioned, this vote, upon that signed amendment being delivered to the clerk's office. And as far as that second sentence, I've already drafted something that I think will fit the bill. If Attorney Kipabasso can't make this work, then he could always come back to us, but it would just simply say, "This letter of non-opposition is issued because a cultivation center located in Lemonster is proposed to supply the Waltham, Mass. RMD." That's it, very simple.
Mr. Chairman, you have a recommendation from the committee.
I, I do. I, I also want to just.
Can you state the recommendation, please?
The recommendation, yes, I understand. The recommendation is to grant Petition 19-19, subject to those two conditions that I relayed and were reiterated by Counselor Bonanza, and then we can have discussion after.
Thank you. Counselor, sir, the recommendation to grant 19-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? I yield the floor right back to the chair first.
I just want to, I just want to add, you know, it's here. And this is a business in town, it's a manufacturing business, and, you know, we want them to do well. And unlike a lot of other manufacturing businesses, they can't hire temporary employees or really low-paying employees, because the training requirements that the state has mandated in, in the background profiles that they've mandated are such that, you know, these are permanent jobs, these are good jobs. And the more, the more work they do out of that facility, and they can't do any more than we've given them a special grant for, but the more they do is probably more in, in better jobs. And that's, that's always in the background of all of this, and it seems to get, it seems to get lost sometimes when we're down here talking about it. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that point as well.
Thank you. Counselor Frida?
First of all, let me say that I do understand how the process goes. I do understand that Waltham, it was very clearly stated earlier that all the departments have been talked to, and just the council that hasn't been. So, in my opinion, that's just a courtesy piece. Talk to the council and just let them know this is coming. And to be doing this without looking at it a little further, I understand what the council to my right is saying, but when this is proposed to us initially, it was to supply Norwood. And now we're expanding to possibly two more than that, for a total of three. And I don't have an issue with that. But we're, we're getting into approving things with two, three, and four conditions sometime. Why are we doing that? Why don't we get the answers to the question and, and then vote on it? So, I, I, I'm not going to support this if we're going to have to do it that way. We did it further time and looked at these, the host agreement, and looked at some of these things, and I would support it, but not, not vote on two or three different areas, not knowing what they are on condition.
What's that, Counselor? Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Counselor?
I just, I, I, I agree with, I agree with that if you're talking about a petition where we're being asked to make a decision involving a lot of merit. You know, this is, this is like getting a hall pass, you know? And if they don't get their permission in Waltham, then it just goes away. I mean, this is really a very administrative, you know, duty that we're, we're being asked to fulfill. So I just, we'll throw that out there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, the recommendation is to grant 19-19. This will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record a jay by a vote of eight to one, 19-19, has been granted, with conditions. We now move on to 20-19. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, Petition 20-19, Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director, to amend the zoning ordinance accordingly, remove the section of Article 1322-71.1 that states, "Signs may not extend above the building's roofline and/or the wall upon which the sign is located." This contradicts Section 22-71.9.1 that covers sign height and states that a sign may extend eight feet above the roofline. My, we, we had a subcommittee meeting on this, Mr. President. My, my feeling was that the committee wanted to give further time to allow the planning director to fully explore this issue with the board, but I would ask you just to defer to them to make sure that's correct.
Defer to your committee?
My committee members.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Frida.
I agree with that.
Counselor Bonanza?
Yeah, I expressed my reservations about making this less restrictive, so I'm, I'm in favor of further time.
Okay, so recommendations further time.
Counselors heard the recommendation read for further time on 20-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded to 20-19. Mr. Chairman, thank you and your committee for the work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We now move on to Ways and Means. We have 21-19. The chairwoman ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, 21-19, Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, a resolution authorizing a policy regarding electioneering during absentee voting for the 2019 local elections. We received a letter dated January 10th to the Honorable City Council, and respectfully requesting that you adopt the attached resolution. Currently, there is no law in place to prohibit electioneering at City Hall during the absentee voting period. It has been recommended by the Secretary of State's Office Elections Division that all cities and towns adopt a policy to prevent electioneering during the absentee voting period during elections to ensure that a voter is not disenfranchised by such actions. I am in support of their recommendation and respectfully request that you adopt the resolution to adopt a policy prohibiting such actions. Respectfully, Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, City of Lemonster. And the resolution is as follows. A resolution authorizing a policy regarding electioneering during absentee voting for the 2019 local elections. Whereas, Chapter 54, Section 65 of the Massachusetts General Laws prohibits electioneering, the display or distribution of material intended to influence the actions of voters at or within 150 feet of the entrance polling places at an election of federal, state, or local officers. Whereas, an increasing percentage of Lemonster voters are taking advantage of their right and opportunity to vote in person by absentee ballot, period, established by the legislature, and come to the city offices at 25 West Street in order to obtain absentee ballots or cast early ballots. Whereas, such voters should be given the right and opportunity to cast or obtain ballots free of electioneering activity, as is enjoyed by voters who cast their vote on the day of the election. Whereas, observance of the 150-foot rule established by Chapter 54, Section 65, at the city offices during in-person absentee voting or early voting period would not unduly restrict the ability of any person to display or distribute campaign messages to prospective voters approaching the city officer's end. Now, therefore, the City of Lemonster adopts the following regulation for the period designated for in-person absentee voting. No poster, card, handbill, placard, picture, or circular intended to influence the action of the voter, other than those expressly authorized by General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 65, shall be posted, exhibited, circulated, or distributed in the city clerk's office in the building where the city clerk's office is located, on the walls thereof, on the premises on which the city offices at 25 West Street stand, within 150 feet of the building entrance door to said city offices. And this would require the president, the City Council's signature and the mayor's signature.
Thank you.
My recommendation, Mr. President, would be to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Counselor, poll the committee. We'll go to Counselor Frida and the clerk.
I agree.
Counselor Dobrowski, third member.
I agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
We have unanimous recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing a policy regarding electioneering during absentee voting for the 2019 local elections.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselors heard the recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a jay by a vote of nine to nothing. The resolution has been adopted. Thank you. We now move on to 22-19. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, 22-19, Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, a resolution to support the continued efforts to encourage all citizens to participate in elections and to educate the public on the importance of key election practices. We received a letter dated January 10th to the Honorable City Council. I am respectfully requesting the adoption of the attached resolution. Statistically, citizens who are part of a minority group are less likely to exercise their right to vote. The city clerk's office is seeking support from the city to provide education resources, support, and outreach to different community groups to assist citizens in learning about their voter rights and providing them with resources for key election practices. Respectfully, Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, City of Lemonster. The resolution reads as follows. A resolution to support the continued efforts to encourage all citizens to participate in elections and to educate the public on the importance of key election practices. Whereas, the right to vote is one of the most important rights of citizenship in a democratic country. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, more than 64% of white, non-Hispanic, voting-age citizens exercised their right to vote in the 2012 presidential election, compared to more than 66% of voting-age African-American citizens, 48% of Hispanic citizens, and more than 47% of Asian citizens. And whereas, the nation's secretaries of state are firmly committed to protecting each citizen's right to vote, and by extension, each citizen's right to register to vote. And whereas, the City of Lemonster supports all voter registration efforts in whose goal is to enfranchise all qualified voters. And whereas, the City of Lemonster continues to work with local community groups to educate the public on the importance of key election practices. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Lemonster heartily encourages all citizens to participate in elections and will continue to work with local community groups to educate the public on the importance of key election practices. This would require the City Council, president's signature, and the mayor's signature. And my recommendation, Mr. President, would be that we adopt this resolution.
Thank you.
And we'll go to my committee.
I'll go to Counselor Frida.
I agree.
Counselor Dobrowski.
I agree.
Please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a unanimous recommendation to adopt the resolution as read.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor, the recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Council Shell, Fozefer.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is a question for the City Clerk. In the second paragraph on the resolution, whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, more than 64% of white, non-Hispanic voting-age citizens voted, compared to more than 66% of voting-age African-American citizens, should that be 46?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a recommendation to amend, please?
Yes. The recommendation is to amend the second paragraph of this resolution, where it will be compared to more than 46% of voting-age African-American citizens.
Thank you. You have a second on the amendment?
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, and the final recommendation is?
Final recommendation is to adopt the resolution as amended.
Thank you. Council Shell, Fozefer, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor on the resolution? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Odinger.
Yay.
Council Benanza.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Shell, Fozefer.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I shall record as a vote of nine to nothing. The resolution has been adopted. And Madam Clerk, thank you for submitting those. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good job. Any items on the old business tonight? Council Feckley.
Yes, Mr. President, I contacted Attorney Stephen Medaus of Myrick O'Connell in Worcester and inquired if he was interested to continue as our legal counsel. And he is, in fact, interested. So we could have him send an email to the City Clerk. I think that's the process. And then she'll work with him to get him reappointed for the year.
Right, at that point. Okay, good. Who has the vote on at that moment? Okay, when we get that letter, we'll take it to the council floor.
Okay.
Thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Any other items on the old business?
I think, Mr. President, I think the ordinance says we have to do that by February 1st. We have to choose one by February 1st.
So...
So we have to vote by then.
Okay. So there's a little bit of a glitch in that process. Is that true? Can you just qualify? I'm not doubting Council Cormier, we just want to make sure we're all set on that.
Couldn't we appoint him, subject to his acceptance?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's not on the agenda tonight, but we can do that. Because this is old business, so we did bring it up in the organizational meeting.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah.
Unless there's an objection to it. We're clear? Okay, so therefore, can you make a recommendation, contingent, please?
I make a recommendation that the City Council appoint Attorney Stephen Medaus of Myrick O'Connell in Worcester as our legal counsel for this year, legislative year, pending his notification to the City Clerk.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, confirmation is taking place. Thank you. With a contingency. Any other items on the old business? We'll now take a look at new business. We have a first reading of an ordinance, petition 4-19. Is the Chair ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 4-19, first reading of an ordinance, amending Chapter 20 of the revised ordinance entitled Streets and Sidewalks. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 20-10 of the revised ordinance entitled Parks, Processions, and Assemblies is hereby amended, rescinding the current text in its entirety and by inserting in its place the following, a new section, 20-10, Parade/Races. This is a matter where the police chief had submitted an ordinance to us, and there were questions raised about it, particularly its length and the detail in the ordinance. I drafted an amended ordinance. It was sent to the police chief. He reviewed it, had no issues with it. We had a subcommittee meeting tonight, Mr. President, where we made three or four or five other amendments to the ordinance. So given the time of the year, and I don't think there's going to be a lot of parades or races, I think it probably makes more sense to further time this, and I can prepare a clean copy of the ordinance for everyone to review. And I just, and I think Council Frida had actually suggested that at the subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
But I just ask you to formally defer to my committee.
I will. You have the floor to the Clerk, Council Frida. Council Benanza, third member.
I'm okay with that.
Please requalify.
So the unanimous recommendation would be to give petition 04-19 further time.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read for further time on 4-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you very much. We now move on to, do we have any other items on the new business that you'd like to discuss? Go.
So as most of you guys know, on February 4th, which is Monday, nomination papers are available. We are changing up the process a little bit. It was brought to my attention that previously anybody could come in and have their nomination papers notarized for their statement of candidacy in our office, but we are no longer going to do that because as the chief election division for the city, it might appear that there's a conflict of interest. So we're just asking everybody who pulls nomination papers to please have them notarized elsewhere so that there's no bias from the City Clerk's office for the election.
Or perception of bias.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. Any other items on the new business? Okay, community calendar. There is a trivia night this Friday night down the Elks. It's a fundraiser for scholarships. I know Mr. Chickolini's been spearheading this for a long time with his team. Again, it's down the Elks. You can contact Don Chickolini on Merrim Avenue or the Mayor's office if, I don't know if they have enough space for teams, but it will be this Friday night. We do have a table petition upon which action is proposed. What is the recommendation? Okay, I'm sorry, we'll go back to new business. Go ahead, Councilor.
Community calendar.
Okay, let's go back. You got it.
Okay. So...
I just have a couple of quick things. Thank you very much for the community calendar. First of all, I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow, Tuesday, the 29th, 6:00 at Skyview School, there is a public forum sponsored by the Mass Teachers Association and hosted by Leominster-Fitchburg and Lunenburg Educational Associations. And this is to talk about funding our public schools into the future. It's continuing a conversation that started the first week in January, I think, at Fitchburg State. So anybody interested in public school funding that wants to, you know, hear what's being talked about or participate in the conversation, please come to Skyview School tomorrow night at 6:00. And then on Wednesday, this Wednesday, January 30th, there is a neighborhood meeting with the abutters to discuss the proposed athletic complex up at Leominster High School. Council Benanza and I have been involved with the neighbors over the last couple of years, I think, in talking about various designs and some of the objections that some of the abutters have raised. I believe that the mayor and the engineer have taken those into consideration, want to talk about those at this meeting on Wednesday night. So that is 6:00 Wednesday night, Room 10, here in City Hall on the second floor.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items on the community calendar? Council Frida?
Yeah, just real quick, tomorrow evening, we have a joint Rotary meeting in Fitchburg, which will be to distribute the checks from the breakfast of the bands.
Nice.
Not sure the exact number, but be fairly substantial, close to 5,000 each.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you very much for... How many years have you been doing that now?
Twenty... Twenty-four, maybe?
Wow, that's fantastic. Great job to the Rotarians. Any other items on the community calendar? Go ahead.
Well, on the subject, April 3rd will be the vocational awards night, where we honor members of the community that are chosen by the department heads. And this will be the 2050 year we do it, be celebrating our 2050 year. So that will, I'll have more information as we go along.
Thank you very much. Any other items? Council Benanza?
I know we have one more meeting before this, but I might as well throw it out there. On February 16th, we'll open the Drake House again in the afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00. That's at 21 Franklin Street in Leominster. And the significance of that is it was the only confirmed stop on the Underground Railroad in Leominster. And the significance of that date is it happens to be the 168th anniversary of the rescue of Shadrach Minkins, who was the fugitive slave who became the first test case in New England under the compromise of 1850's New Fugitive Slave Law, which many historians believe is the touchstone of the Civil War. So it's a huge piece of history, happens to fall neatly on a Saturday, the anniversary of that important rescue that Mrs. Drake participated in. And we'll be there. We heat the, we only, so far, we only have the parlor open. It will be heated. We had 300 people show up on December 8th, stand in line outside, wait their turn to get inside. Pretty good testament to the fact, because as, like I said, it was a really cold day. But the parlor itself will be heated, and I'll be interpreting some of the history there. And we'll have, we'll move artifacts from the Historical Society into the room for that particular day, once again.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any other items on the community calendar? Okay, we now have a table petition. What is the recommendation of the chairperson of Legal Affairs to dispose it or take it off the table?
I would, I don't know if I can defer this to the petitioner, or maybe we need to vote to take it off the table first.
We have to vote to take it off the table or leave it first.
Okay, I'll make a recommendation to take petition 2-19 off the table for some input from the petitioner.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read, to take 2-19 off the table for action or disposition. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, is now before the council for action or disposition. I yield the floor to the petitioner, 2-19.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This petition originally, I filed this on, at the request of the Chief of Police, who came to our meeting, I believe it was on August 13th. We had a hearing, and he gave his, you know, his insight. And one of the things that we did want to do at that time, one of the reasons why we did table it, was because we wanted to have the building inspector down. And he was out on medical leave at the time, and then when he came back, he was part-time for a while. So in the meantime, very recently, as a matter of fact, I did have some issues with some yard sales of sorts on Main Street in Leominster, if you can believe it, during the winter. So I had called him about them, because it was one particular scofflaw that, you know, has been doing it for quite a while. And I mentioned this to him. I told him it was on the agenda last meeting when I could not attend. And he is more than willing to come down and speak with the council. He would be expecting the invitation, if that's the council's appetite, to have him down. So that's where we're at with this. But I would be very interested to hear what he has to say.
Okay.
About yard sales and scofflaws in particular.
Thank you. I yield the floor back to the Chair.
Well, given that, I guess the recommendation would be to give 2-19 further time, with a reminder, don't mess with dogs or yard sales. I'd ask you to, I'd ask you to refer that to my committee.
The annual Johnny Appleseed Festival of pit bulls.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Are you going to have a subcommittee meeting where you can invite him down to chat with you?
I can do that, but I think you got to defer to my committee and then make the formal.
Okay. So further time has been the recommendation from the Chair. You have the floor to the Clerk.
I agree. I thought you were going to table it again, but I'll agree further time.
Tabled, we've done that before. Council Benanza, third member.
With equal or greater trepidation than the Chair, I will agree to further time.
Okay, good. We have a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
So the recommendation is further time, and we can set up a subcommittee meeting. I'll invite the building inspector down.
Okay, can we establish that subcommittee meeting right now?
Sure.
Looking into February... Next meeting's on, what, the 11th?
Yep.
So we could do it before the next meeting?
That's fine with me.
Does that work for you?
Do you allow that?
Yeah. 5:30?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a Monday. It's a regular meeting. 5:30.
Okay, so 5:30, and we're also going to vote to have the inspector come down?
Yes.
You're going to have enough time? You have any other items on that agenda where you might have to tweak it a little more?
No, I would be the only one.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Okay, Councilor, the recommendation on 2-19 for further time, to also establish a subcommittee meeting on February 11th at 5:30 PM in the council chambers, and to take a vote this evening to confer, to request the building inspector, now that he's back to work, to come to that meeting to speak to 2-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, so read. We're all set. Any other items? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.